Good evening, everybody. How are you? Welcome to our public hearing tonight pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975. This meeting was sent to the Asbury Park Press on March 22, 2024. Has been advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of March 30, 2024. All clerks of the townships, boroughs within the regional high school districts have been duly notified, and the requirements of this posting was met on March 26, 2024. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Mr. T, any changes to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was printed prior to the start of the meeting, the board also discussed, for exception number three, an HIB appeal, and it discussed the student suspension discipline report.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 8 board meeting as amended on March 14, regular board meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Acetola, second. Mrs. Bruno.
Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin? Ms. McCov?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno? Yes. As a note, communications are on file with the Board Secretary. Yes. Communications are on file with the Board Secretary. Now we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening. Tonight, we have two board presentations. Our student safety data report, formerly known as the Electronic Violence and Vandalism and Substance Abuse Report. We also, tonight, a big night, we have the public hearing on our budget for fiscal year 25. There's also two board reports this evening, policy and finance. So the student safety presentation, this reflects district data on incidents of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and substance abuse. We are reporting for Phase One for this school year, which, you know, in essence starts in July because we have students here who are over the summer, through December 31 of the school year. The Phase Two data will reflect January 1 of '24 to June 30 of '24. We're going to present that Phase Two report to the Board of Education in July. We have done a comparison of the Phase One data for last school year at this time as compared to this school year, and we're pleased to present that the majority of the areas that are in this report, the district has fewer incidents, you know, across the district. So again, a very special thank you to Mr. Mendez, who will present tonight, and to all of our building principals, who I know are truly committed to, you know, a safe and secure and orderly environment for our students. It is something, as a district, we are highly committed to, and these are data points that we take very seriously and analyze and review even with our leadership team. So, Mr. Mendez, if you don't mind, if you could present the Phase One report for us?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Hazel. So as Dr. Hazel said, this is Phase One. All these incidents are incidents that the building principals deal with and then send up to my office, and we input them into the state database, the SSDS system. Okay? So as Dr. Hazel said, all of our, most of our numbers have gone down dramatically. So I'm going to go over each one of them, and we'll break out each category. So the first one is violence. Last year, in Phase One, we had 28 incidents. This year, as you can see, we have 20. So we're down eight there. Vandalism, we had four last year, one this year in Phase One. And again, this is Phase One, the Phase One comparison, Phase One of the '22, '23 year against Phase One of the '23, '24 year. Weapons, we had no weapons offenses this year, and we had eight last year in Phase One. Substance abuse incidents, these are substance abuse incidents. We had 45 in Phase One of last year, and this year, as you can see, we only had 23. Our HIB confirmed, we're up a little there. We have 45 this year. Last year, in Phase One, we had 40. Our alleged HIBs, harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations are 27 for this year, which is down a little bit from last year where we were at 30. Okay? So overall, HIB, we're up to, we're at 72 in Phase One this year. Last year, we were at 70. So to break it down a little bit, the violence, assaults, simple assaults, we're at six this year. Last year, we had one sexual contact. We have one this year. We had none last year. We have no sexual assaults, just like we had last year, no sexual assaults. Threats, last year, we had 10. We have five this year in Phase One. Fights, we had 17 last year, and we have nine this year. So, you know, again, I just want to kind of add to, especially to the administrator sitting in the room, the principals and the assistant principals have done a really good job with their buildings and their kids to make sure that these things are on the downward trend. We have, so on the previous page, there was labeled 20 violence, and there's 21 here. That's because one of the incidents was labeled for two things. Okay? Vandalism and weapons. We are at zero damage to property, zero to false public alarm. Last year, we had zero damage to property and one false public alarm. We had three thefts last year. This year, we only have one. Trespassing is zero, same as it was in Phase One of last year, zero. And again, weapons, we're at zero this year, and last year, we had eight possessions of a weapon. Substance abuse. On this slide, you're going to see 34 different, the numbers are going to add up to 34, but there was only 23 incidents. Again, a couple incidents were labeled both substance use confirmed and possession. That's why there's more. So substance use confirmed in Phase One this year, we had 13. Last year, in Phase One, we had 16. Possession, we had 15 this year, and last year, we were at 35. So a drastic decrease. Our sale and distribution, we had zero again, just as last year, and kids that refused an exam, we had zero again, just as last year. Possession of drug paraphernalia, we have six this year. We had four last year in Phase One. So roughly the same. These are the types of substance used. Okay? Again, there was 13 use confirmed. You only see 12 up here. There were 12 THC, marijuana, a lot of THC cartridges through vapes. That's what we're seeing in the schools. There was one instance that was an undetermined drug that is not categorized by the DOE. They actually have an undetermined category, so that was our 13th one. Last year, we had 15 marijuana instances. We had five unauthorized prescription drugs. We had two alcohol in Phase One. So as you can see, our numbers are down because we're zero everywhere else. And then the last thing, as I already stated, are HIBs. Okay? We had 40 confirmed last year. We're 45. 27 alleged, and we're at, or 30 alleged last year, 27 this year, for a total of 72 this year, and we were at 70 last year in Phase One. I will say, just kind of a positive on the HIB. I think you've all seen it in your reports. We are down where we were last year. I think last year, at this time, we were at 122. We're at 111 now. So we're trending down, which is good. And then these are just some of the programs and things that the schools are doing. It's not everything that they're doing. There is a lot of things that they're doing. You can see, you know, all the services that we have in the counseling department. We, you know, were trained in restorative practices for the last few years that we've been instituting in our buildings. Our partnerships with our alliances in our communities have brought in speakers. I know I was just over at Dr. Bleakley's building the other day, and his alliance brought in a fantastic speaker for his students, our student mentors, our grade level meetings. I just want to make a note that our grade level meetings don't just happen at the beginning of the year. We have grade level meetings, and then the administration pushes into classrooms and does smaller meetings with the students to, on a more personal level. Our Week of Respect and Violence and Vandalism activities, our educational programs. One of the other things I want to just kind of note is, you know, this year, we have a curriculum. It's a counseling curriculum. It's called Pathways to Respect, and it's to proactively address bullying behaviors, both for alleged offenders and targeted pupils. It's both proactive, hopefully you catch it before it happens, and also an intervention for after it happens. So that's the report for Phase One, and then we'll be back in July for Phase Two.
Is it pathways at all the schools?
Yes. Yes, all the counselors were trained on the pathways to respect toward the end of last year, through the summer and the beginning of this year. The curriculum is in all of the counseling departments.
And marijuana and the vapes? Is it more vapes?
It's more vapes. Yeah. It's more vapes. It's not the old school marijuana.
Yeah. I have to compliment the administration, all of the principals and their staff.
Absolutely.
That's a pretty good report.
It is. They've done a fantastic job.
I think we were in the 30s, the 40s.
Yeah.
Vandalism was terrible. I mean, it was nice to see all those zeros.
I know. It's a great report, and it's a tribute to the administration and the buildings. They've done a fantastic job with it. We've still got a ways to go, and they keep working at it, so, you know, hopefully the numbers will continue to trend down.
10 weeks, we can do it.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. And in each folder for the board members, that report is included, as well as the comparative data comparing to last year's Phase One. And as I said, July, we will be presenting Phase Two, January through the end of the school year. These are data points that the leadership team and the central office team, you know, work on, pretty much on a monthly basis. But full credit to our principals and to the assistant principals in the buildings and our staff. This evening, always at our April board meeting, is our public hearing of the budget. This evening, we are presenting the Freehold Regional High School District Fiscal Year 25 budget. This year is a little different than in the past, as the Board of Education will not be voting on the budget tonight, as there's pending legislation that it wants to consider before finalizing this budget. While this legislation would not remedy our fiscal challenges, it will be important for the Board to consider. And for that reason, this year, the budget vote will take place at our upcoming board meeting on May 14. You know, I think, you know, before Mr. Boyce goes into kind of the nuts and bolts of the annual school budget report, I think it's important for us to hear and understand kind of the fiscal stage here at Freehold Regional High School District. Freehold Regional is 19.3 million below adequacy. That's the state's district-specific calculation of the amount of money that's necessary to provide a thorough and efficient education. So we need 19.3 more dollars in order to appropriately educate our students. That's the situation that we are here in at this district. Freehold Regional spending consistently ranks among 31 high school-only districts in the state, and it's lowest in the Monmouth County school districts. This is a fiscally responsible school district. We take pride in that, and we really feel that our budget is as tight as it possibly can be. This administration and the Board of Education have spent countless hours trying to manage the district fiscal crisis over the past seven years. Years of S2 cuts have severely impacted us, and our future budget development strategies for fiscal '26 will be even more difficult and impactful unless state aid improves and the 2% tax levy is relaxed, or both. So balancing a budget at Freehold Regional High School District is no easy task. The uncertainty of our fiscal future is what concerns me most and was a major consideration in the development of this budget. We may now, after seven years of clamoring through S2, see some governmental action to address the S2 disparity and be poised to provide a real means to raise needed funds to offset some of these catastrophic losses that Freehold Regional has experienced. The volatility of state funding and the timing of these proposals makes it difficult to develop multi-year projections and for this district to appropriately plan. At this present moment, uncertainty remains for fiscal year 25. This is the typical time where we present our budget, and we vote on our budget, and that is not happening. Fiscal year '26 and beyond is a complete unknown, as it pertains to where the district will stand with state aid, all while trying to recover from years of our S2 cuts. Please note, if the funding formula were to remain as is, Freehold Regional would be slated to see a $10.8 million state aid reduction in fiscal year '26. We do remain optimistic that things will change, but our challenge for fiscal year '25 was to close an $11.4 million deficit. And, you know, I think it's important for folks to, you know, know where did that number arrive at. We have the expiration of ARP-ESR grants. We have the loss of a one-time injection of supplemental stabilization aid of 6.7 million. That was a one-time. Our decline of our fund balance, an aggressive drawdown over these years of our surplus, and just the general rise in costs and inflation that I think each of us are all have complete understanding of. This budget, you know, stands at 19.3 million below adequacy, and this is not sustainable. The budget that will be presented tonight reflects a continued aggressive drawdown of surplus, further increased budget risk through tightening of appropriations, thereby reducing the district's ability to manage unforeseeable costs. This budget has spreading equipment costs over multiple years, our Chromebooks, our technology equipment, our maintenance equipment, all being spread out through multiple years. The elimination of Raze Academy, tangible position reductions, which have been happening all through S2. Reduction of building-based instructional allocations, monies that go directly to the building principals and their teams, and transportation route consolidations. This budget reflects a reduction of 39 positions, including administrators, supervisors, teachers, and support staff. We always try to do our best to manage as much as we can through attrition. That's retirements and resignations. Unfortunately, this year, the budget was not able to absorb all the reductions through attrition. Since the inception of S2, our total staff has decreased by 135 positions. This budget was fully analyzed, and tough decisions needed to be made, impacting many aspects of our educational landscape and impacting all levels of the organization. In working through this budget, our priorities remain focused on preserving our academic program and retaining as many instructional staff as possible, as we know, instruction and student supports are the heart of our work, and efforts must continue to create an administrative and supervisory environment that works alongside educators to maximize their effectiveness. Mr. Boyce and I have spent, and our team, has spent a lot of time in reviewing and analyzing and preparing this budget. Mr. Boyce is going to kind of step us through the budget plan, and this reflects really a compounded impact of S2 and the difficult decisions that, you know, were made in order to balance this budget. Mr. Boyce, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hazel. Certainly a lot to digest in those opening comments, and we'll touch on all of them as we work our way through. I think the best way to approach this is to start sort of broad, right? What's the lay of the land? How is a school district budget structured? The state aid, the legislative component, how does that work into it? And then how did that impact Freehold Regional over time? Then we'll move to the FY '25 budget itself, and finally, where do we go from here? So I wanted to start by just looking at an overall school budget. Now, this is the revenue side of the budget, and certainly there's a lot to look at there. What I wanted to first address is just the fund structure. So what you see here are three funds that represent, together represent, the school district budget. For a total budget of 900, or sorry, 214 million, you can see that 207 million of that is in the general fund. So that's certainly the lion's share of it, and that's where we will be spending most of our time tonight. But let me just touch on the other two. I'll start from the bottom. The debt service fund is, reflects repayment of bonded debt. So a few years back, the community had a referendum in that past, and what that referendum actually does is it authorizes the district to issue debt and then perform the projects associated with that debt. So effectively, there's authorizing the community to levy and between a combination of tax levy and state aid to make those debt payments over time. So that's scheduled out for the duration of that bonded debt, and you can see, it's going to be fairly consistent all the way through. Special revenue fund is for federal and state programs, and it's primarily federal, that are very specifically earmarked for specific use. Now, some of these are very routine and very steady. IDEA, federal program, provides money for special education. The ESEA is, the title grants, provides money, and they're fairly consistent. You'll see a sizable drop-off here, and what that represents is federal money that was in response to COVID. So COVID recovery money came in three pieces over time, and that money has expired, and so that's the reason for the fall-off in revenue there. Now, that's actually contributes to the overall deficit that we worked to close, because some of those costs, although the intent was that they would match up with the need associated with COVID in the years that followed, and some of that need dissipated, but not all of it. So to the extent that it persists, then it moves up into the general fund and puts additional stress on the general fund. Other components of this federal funding, ESR funding, this in particular is the ARP-ESR funding, are things that we were able to do during that time, but with the elimination of the, or the expiration of the funding, those associated programs are no longer going to be continued. So general fund, and I want to, I want to spend some time on the top two, the two major categories here, which are property tax and state aid through the formula aid. These are both connected, and they both fall under the general umbrella of budget law that's imposed, and they work together. And so we're going to take a look at that specifically, just in general, and then we'll look at it as it applied to Freehold Regional over time. So the funding formula, state aid, SFRA, they're all essentially synonymous for the piece of legislation that enacts the school funding formula, and it's a methodology to ensure that all districts have an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education. That's the charge of our state-level legislators, is to come up with a system that ensures that that happens. And that's a tall order, and there have been a number of funding formulas along the way. The one that is in place now, the School Funding Reform Act, came about in 2008, and I think the conceptual, the bones of it are very sound. They're solid, and it's a fairly straightforward approach, right? So first would be to measure, how much should it cost? And then the second step of that is, how are we going to pay for it? So that seems like a pretty reasonable approach to me. So here's how it works. They take the district-specific enrollment and push it through a uniform cost model to arrive at a number, the adequacy budget. Now, that's a different number for every single school district, because although the cost model is uniform, which means it's the same cost model applied to every district, every district has a different enrollment, has different demographics in their enrollment. And the cost model will address the specific characteristics of those students that have different needs, and therefore there are different costs associated with that. So that's the approach to determine what's necessary. The next step in this is to, the way that it's designed, it's local fair share first. So let's talk about that. That's the community. Think property taxes, the community's contribution to the adequacy budget, to the extent that they are able to pay. And so the calculation of the local fair share has been volatile, and this is a tough, a tough thing to do, to measure a community's ability to pay, because that's going to take some judgment and some methodology that they have to land on. So what the formula calls for is to look at two wealth indicators, right? And then translate them into what could the community afford on property taxes. Those two wealth indicators are the, essentially, the fair market value of your property, which would be an indicator of wealth, and also the income tax returns from the most recent year. So they take those two and convert them into a community's ability to pay. Whatever's remaining that's necessary to get to the adequacy budget, that would be what's called equalization aid, all right? Or state aid. So state aid, actually, there's really two categories. There's something called categorical aid, and those are different things that wealth does not influence the calculation of funding that would go to each school district. And very often, they're things that just don't lend themselves to a, some broad-based formula or cost model, things like transportation, because that's a geography, that's impacted by geography. So a very rural area, their costs for transportation would be a lot more than an area that you could fill an elementary school in a 10-block radius, right? So they remove that kind of impact, because it's not going to fit into a cost model that could be applied. So the categorical aids plus equalization aid, which is the only one that's influenced by wealth, together are what's known as state aid, and that's what appears on budgets in school districts across the state. So that's the design of it conceptually. How that's played out over time has been the subject of considerable debate. So what I have here is, this is the local fair share and total state aid, because that's the more important number. It's not just equalization aid, and I'll speak more about that in a bit. But I want to give you a moment to just take a look at this. The red lines are what the SFRA calculated should happen, and the green lines are what actually happened. So take a moment to digest that. So the local fair share, let's talk about the red line of the local fair share. I mentioned earlier that it's somewhat volatile from year to year in this measure of a community- I mentioned earlier that it's somewhat volatile from year to year in this measure of a community's ability to pay for its own education. And it's been, it's gone up significantly, but our property tax levy has not. And the reason for that, one of the reasons for that, is that there's another budget law unrelated to the SFRA that limits increases to the property tax levy by 2%. So the designers of the SFRA did not contemplate that limitation when they came up with a system to ensure that every district has an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education. So in cases like Freehold Regional and other districts as well, the inability to access your local fair share has pushed us further and further below adequacy. Because on the aid side, the aid is calculated as if the entire local fair share is available to the district, which it's not because of the 2% cap law. So it's not surprising that as the local fair share red line goes up, the aid, the associated aid would go down, right? Because they're going to move in that relationship to each other, because taken together, they would need to fund adequacy. So the tax levy currently at 155 million for this 25 budget is $50 million below the state's calculation of this community's ability to pay property taxes, which is a significant differential. And it's not something that, if the 2% capital levy did not exist, I cannot imagine that over the span of the SFRA, that the district would have availed itself of that level of property taxes along the way. But that's, that has been what the formula calculates. On the other side, it's also an interesting dynamic. Because if you look at the green line of what actually happens, you'll notice that for several years there, the amount of aid remained flat. So there was a period of time where there was some philosophical differences at the state level as to whether or not the SFRA is the right approach. And during that time, the implementation of the formula was essentially paused, and districts got the same as they got last year. Now, some districts were on the good side of that, and some districts were not on the good side of that. So a district that had declining enrollment, if you think back to the circles of how much should it cost, as the student profile, the demographics dropped, well, then the adequacy budget would go down in a corresponding way. And therefore, because it's lower, after the local fair share, there would be less aid. There would be less money to pull together to meet adequacy. On the other hand, districts that had increasing enrollment, well, their adequacy budget was going up, their state aid was not going up, assuming local fair share remained consistent, their state aid was not going up. So there were a lot of districts that were under adequacy, districts with growing enrollment and other needs that wasn't being addressed during this time. Freehold Regional was on the good side of that. We had modest declines in enrollment, but more importantly, our enrollment wasn't going up. So the flat state funding over that stretch of years didn't harm this district. So at a point where S2, and you'll see S2, and that's a piece of legislation, refers to Senate Bill Number Two, which was the state's attempt to like, to step back and say, all right, we need to course correct here. And we need to start moving districts from this just flat, same as last year methodology to following the formula as it was designed. And in order to do that, they took a seven-year phase in. To do it in one year would have been too abrupt for districts to be able to manage over time. And so during those seven years, they gradually brought down the state aid of districts that were overaided to where they should be according to the formula. Fiscal year 25 is the last year of that. Now, Freehold Regional is a district that is unique and is the only one that was impacted by a change in this trajectory of S2. And that happened last summer. So if you notice, the last two years of the green line on the aid side are flat. The reason for that is that legislation was passed that districts that met certain criteria, which we did, and I believe we were the only ones that did, would be exempt from S2 cuts in the final two years. So that's FY24 and FY25. And the condition to that was that courtesy busing would be provided during those years. So, and we had, we had just cut courtesy busing in our original budget for the current year. So a year ago, right at this time, we had cut courtesy busing. And this piece of legislation that was championed by Senator Gopao, whose legislative district is within Freehold Regional, was able to pause that, those cuts for those two years. So that was extremely beneficial. The amount of the cuts, which was 6.7 million for '24, and another 4 million for the '25 budget, we've avoided. But effectively, what that legislation did was not eliminate those cuts, but simply defer them. So as of, you know, the '25 budget, looking towards the future, the state aid calculation has us slated to lose 10.8 million in state aid for the '26 budget, right? And that's those two years deferred. So good for now, but potentially a problem down the road. Now, I think with S2 coming to an end in FY25, there seems to be, and Dr. Hazel and I were down at the Assembly Ed Committee hearings and the Senate Ed Committee hearings, to listen to some of that discussion, there seems to be some broad support for going in and taking a look at the SFRA ahead of the FY26 budget and making any adjustments that would make it work right. Again, you know, districts like Freehold Regional and others that are significantly below adequacy have made the case along the way here during these years that, you know, we need a path to adequacy. I mean, we, in Freehold Regional, we started out in '20 with being 1.6 million below adequacy, and I'm going to cheat here. So '21, we were 1.6 million below adequacy, then 4.8, then 11.4, 13.6, and now 19.3. So you can see it's a steady decline year over year. And some of the decisions that we've made along the way, we've made out of need, out of desire to keep programs and staff afloat while at the same time advocating fiercely for, you know, reform in SFRA and a path to adequacy. So that's how the SFRA came about, and that's how it's impacted Freehold Regional over time. So like, as Dr. Hazel said, you know, we are optimistic about the year ahead. I think now that S2 has come to a close, that's an opportunity to get in there. And since everybody is right, except for Freehold Regional, we're actually probably the only ones that are overaided at this point to the tune of 10.8 because of the legislation that Senator Gopao championed, and was very helpful and is again very helpful for fiscal year 25. So back to the revenue slide, there's a couple items on here. And this is, this is really indicative of some of the challenges that this district and others face, is non-recurring revenues getting matched up with recurring expenses, right? So, and we've done, we've used those strategies, and they compromise the overall structural integrity of the budget. They will run their course, and predictably, as we knew, they were going to run their course. But things like this, it's, these are one-time pieces of revenue, and I'm just going to use that as a jumping off port. So the first is S3950. That's what I just talked about with the two years of deferred state aid cuts. So in '24, when we got, the total was 6.7 million cut for '24. We were required to reinstate courtesy busing, which we did. That cost $3.5 million. And the balance of that, the 3.2 million that you'll see in the FY25, we did not infuse that into the budget and spend that. Instead, we held that back because we knew we would need it for '25. And so, and we have it as an item of revenue in '25. And it's been helpful, I mean, even with that, still more than $11 million of a deficit that we needed to manage. The other item is, this was a one-time only infusion of state aid at this time last year. And it was the legislature's effort to sort of offset deeper-than-expected S2 cuts. But it was, you know, it had its own category, and it didn't factor into the S2 calculations. But it was a one-time, and it's not available again this year. So districts, S2 districts, so districts receiving cuts, did get this one-time infusion of state aid, and that was very fortunate for that year. But we moved to the next year, and it's an immediate hole in our budget revenue-wise. So I just wanted to highlight those two things, and then talk more about, you know, other funding sources and other strategies that we've used along the way. You'll see the other important or significant item on here is fund balance. So as Dr. Hazel mentioned, we have aggressively been drawing down our surplus. Surplus fund balance are synonymous for the purpose of this conversation. And you can see there's, you know, we're going from 16 million to 11 million. And that's going to be our continued trajectory. That's not a one-time thing. So as each year passes, as you would imagine, the more aggressive you are in your drawdown, the less that's available for future years. So on the revenue side, those are, those are some unique aspects of it that I wanted to mention. I will also mention that, something that Dr. Hazel noted in her opening comments, was that we drew down an additional 2 million that had originally been set aside. That's included in the 11 million. But again, these are the strategies that we use to close a budget gap. So, okay. So the revenue story is up there. On the appropriation side, you all should have a handout that was available up at the table. And for those of you watching the video, it'll be in the budget section. There should be a copy of it there as well, and you should look at that in connection with this. So as you can see, you know, better than 70% of the money that we spend goes towards instruction and support services. The next largest player at 25 million is transportation. Facilities, 9% transportation, 12 facilities, 9% administrative costs, 8. And then there's some capital costs also included. It's actually not zero, but it's point less than .5. So it's coming up as zero. Let me just talk a little bit about facilities. So in typical times, a district would set aside money along the way into what are called facility reserves. There's two of them, but they're, think of them as like savings accounts, to accumulate money to pay for big-ticket capital-type projects, new roof, that type of thing. Things that are of a size that you can't fit into a normal operating budget. So there's an opportunity to set money aside, fill those reserves, and draw from them as needed. We have not been able to make any deposits into those reserves with our budgets over the last five, six years, because we've needed the dollars to dedicate to the operating budget because of cuts in state aid along the way and being driven further and further below adequacy. So what a district will do, and what we've done, is a referendum to handle some, a collection of these big-ticket items. We were able to do that a few years back for $15 million. It was roofing and paving projects, certainly not everything that needed to be addressed, but the most imminent Priority One tier of roofing and paving projects. And the community was supportive of that. But in the meantime, you know, we don't anticipate, we have not been able to deposit money in reserves. We don't anticipate to be able to budget to deposit money into reserves to handle that. So we need to incorporate that in our larger, long-term thinking as far as our facilities and capital needs go. But at this time, and for the foreseeable future, providing funding within an annual budget for that type of thing is just not viable. So let's talk specifically about closing what was initially an $11.4 million budget gap. And you take a moment to read the different categories that we have listed up there. You know, many of these things we've been doing along the way with S2. We've been engaged in this. And when you cut things like building allocations or curriculum resources and things like that, you know, it's not likely to be in a position to be restored in the following year because we're still in cut mode with a new round of less revenue to work with. So if you compound this stuff over time, you really get to the point where there's not much left to do there. And as Dr. Hazel mentioned earlier, that our spending metrics are very low, to be the lowest among our 31 sibling districts, there's 31 high school-only districts across the state, our lowest spending among those, we're the lowest spending of 50 or so Monmouth school districts, which we shouldn't be, right? Because high school students are more expensive than middle school students, and who are more expensive than elementary school students. And that's all reflected in that uniform cost model we talked about earlier. So with a district that's all high school students, you could make the argument, you would expect that to be the highest-spending district since they are all high school districts. So our spending metrics fare well, but that's an interesting thing to show, and I think it's the next slide. But it doesn't, it doesn't do any good on the ground because we're falling further and further below, and those metrics will continue to reflect lower and lower spending for the district, which is not something that we necessarily aspire to be. But it is an indicator of, you know, the efficiencies that we do have when you look at the opportunities available at Freehold Regional and at the price points. We think that should really serve as a model for how to do it. Now, we do have economy of scale working in our favor, and so that plays a role for sure. But a lot of that is in terms of, you know, critical mass of student interest to support a program, whether it's culinary. You know, if you have a 1,200-kid high school out there, there's not going to be enough kids interested in pursuing that path to begin a culinary program with a fully functioning restaurant and bakery and front of the house, back of the house. Excellent experience over at Freehold Borough High School that kids can apply for and get involved with. But, and it's because of our size, and that there's enough students to support that type of program. I think Dr. Hazel has covered much of that in our opening comments, and in addition, along the way when we're talking about revenue items. So the work ahead of us is, in anticipation of FY26, there are a number of things that we are going to look at and are in the process of looking at and exploring so that we have, we are prepared to do the next level of things that we need to do in order to submit a balanced budget. In the area of transportation, you know, courtesy busing would be back on the table. Subscription busing, how does that look? We're going to look at changing school times and moving from a two-tier transportation system to a three-tier transportation system, and see if that's something that's viable. In the area of athletics, that could include any one of or a combination of participation fees, fewer academic and extracurricular opportunities available, fewer levels of athletics, right? So there's a couple of different So there's a couple of different ways to go at that, and so that'll be part of our work as we prepare for the next year. Administrative structure, what are other ways to do that and leverage our administrative personnel to the best of our ability, and what are the financial implications of that? Other revenue, so sponsorships, advertising, that type of thing. Perhaps accepting tuition students in certain programs is something that we're going to take a look at. That's nuanced as well, so we do have our work ahead of us for that. Selling assets included in tonight's, in the revenue tonight is the sale of ten to twelve school buses, because, you know, there's a bus driver shortage out there. I do not believe that that is going to end anytime soon. And while we originally had a hundred and twenty-four of our own drivers, we now have around seventy-five drivers, because there's an extreme bus driver shortage out there. So I'm not going to maintain a fleet that's built for a hundred-plus drivers. So those buses, some of those buses, we're going to sell, and they, and school buses have a useful life. So these buses would still have useful life ahead of them, but in selling assets, that's the type of thing we're looking for. There's also a parking lot adjacent to our transportation depot that we've cut, that's part of the appropriations cut, so, because we'll have less buses, we won't need that lot. Other areas would, all of the areas I mentioned, and then finally, programs themselves, and, you know, the undersubscribed programs, are we offering the right programs? Is student interest shifted? Where can we make the best use of the dollars that we have in program offerings? So that would be refining our program. So a lot of work ahead of us in preparation for the decisions we may have to make come this time next year. So as I just mentioned, you know, uh... So here's the comparative, and this is available on the state's website. So if you go to the DOE section of the website, this is the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending. And what it does is it takes audited numbers and analyzes them, groups them with similar districts, so that you can have a comparative look at where you stack up compared to other school districts. You can see our spending per pupil of fourteen, five, twelve is considerably less than the category right next to it, the grade category, which is all thirty-one of the high school-only districts. So we're the lowest of that grouping there. And then you can see where, you know, other groupings of districts based on grade range and enrollment, and how that shakes out. So all that information is available, district by district, category by category. It's a good resource to see really where your district stacks up on spending. So property tax impact for what is, what was advertised in the tentative budget is a two percent increase in the levy. It looks like this. Now, a couple of comments about this. This is tax rate, right? There is more than the tax rate that factors into the amount of property taxes you pay as an individual property owner. Mammoth County had piloted a program to bring all municipalities, their assessed value, which is the actual basis you play your taxes on, up to fair-market value in an effort to just make the tax burden spread evenly across, not only from town to town, but within each town. So that as those assessments and the value of the properties go up on the tax assessor's books, then necessarily the rates come down. So this is not the whole story. What I would suggest is that you get your individual property tax bill, and any questions that you have, your local assessor can address those specifically. But from a tax rate perspective, this is what it looks like with a two percent increase on the budget. Now, this is something that is currently in motion, pending legislation, because there are a number of districts, and just generally speaking, there are some school districts that are a year or two ahead of us in being in a crisis position, and those districts are confronting that now. One of the legislators' responses to that has been this proposed legislation that would allow districts to increase property taxes. And for those districts who were cut this year, a portion of that, they would be eligible to receive a grant, which would just be more state aid. But that's only for the current year and only for two-thirds of the current year. We have no current-year cuts. So for districts like us, it's a five-year look back. So the way it works as currently proposed, but not yet passed, is you look at what your state aid is for twenty-five compared to what your state aid is for twenty-one, that difference, you would be allowed to go beyond the two percent cap. That differential for us is ten million dollars plus. So there was a lot of discussion about that among the administrative team, Dr. Hazel and our team, as to what the different variations of that look like. What I've included here is, it's not the full ten million, it's seven million to get to the ten million. That's actually the spread there, but inclusive of the two percent rather than in addition to, as something to put forward for the board's consideration, should this be available by the time we adopt our budget on May fourteenth. So the corresponding tax impact, so instead of the one that we just looked at, it would look, it would look more like that. Now, that is something that passed the Assembly last week. It's scheduled to be heard or considered by the Senate in the weeks to come, September ninth. And then the last day for a school district to adopt a budget is May fourteenth. We've moved our May meeting to May fourteenth, it was earlier than that, just to preserve options for the board to the greatest extent that we can. So that's something that is not yet resolved. We'll see where we land when it comes May fourteenth, and the board will consider action, course of action from there. If this were to be the course of action, this is our view of how that additional seven million dollars would be spent. A lot of the things that we discussed here, that we've discussed previously in this presentation, so they'll be familiar to you. A couple of things I do want to point out. Reinstate the Raze Academy. So the Raze Academy is a Twilight program that was discontinued, but with that the federal COVID-related grant money, when that did come, that was one of, an important response to COVID and discipline issues and getting students readjusted. Raze was a very useful tool, and it was funded through that program. But with the ESER money expiring, that federal grant money expiring, Raze was not included, is not included in the budget. That includes a two percent increase on the levy. It's not technically a cut, because it was never funded through the general fund, but nonetheless, it's, Raze would not be here next year. One of the things that we would propose to do is to bring Raze back for another year and continue that resource for our students for one more year. Budget risk, let me just address that in general. So one of the collection of strategies that we've used along the way during the S-two years was to tighten appropriations without a corresponding cut. Now, obviously, risk comes with that. If you reduce your utility appropriation, you're more aggressive with your projections, well, there's more risk that you may not have sufficient funds in that particular line item. I mean, we have not, although we've become more risk-tolerant in those areas, we've not crossed over into irresponsible, in my opinion. But that's where we're headed. We're approaching it, and in some cases, we're fairly close to it, more than I'm really comfortable with. But that's, those are the things that we need to do in order to keep programs and services available to our school community. So a part of the risk, the additional risk taken on in this twenty-five budget, we would restore some of that, and it's roughly fifty percent of the risk taken. You see the area of adjusted appropriations, and what that refers to is in the area of health benefits. One of the things that we did along the way in S-two years was move to a fully-insured health benefits program. There is more risk in that, but there's also more opportunity to reap the benefit of low-claims year. So that's the one area that would be, one of the areas that we would be looking at in there. So with this pending legislation, should it become available? The tax impact was a previous slide, but it's just another seven million dollars plus of revenue, and this is how that would be deployed. This is how we're proposing that be deployed. So, I'm sorry, I'm holding this upside down, so I'm going backwards instead of forwards. So that's an overview of the FY twenty-five budget. And so I think the important takes, takeaways here are, you know, a lot of the strategies we've used have run their course. We have a potential problem waiting for us in twenty-six in terms of state aid. We are hopeful that the state spends some time with the SFRA and makes the necessary adjustments, so that districts have an opportunity to get to adequacy budget and have an adequate amount of money to provide a thorough and efficient education by that measure. And we're also hopeful that the legislation that's currently pending is seen as passed, and that the board can consider the options associated with that. So with that, Dr. Hazel, I'll turn it back over to you, and then questions from the board and questions from the community.
Mr. Boyce, thank you. As always, an extremely clear presentation, I think, really demonstrates, you know, our current situation for the fiscal year twenty-five budget, and, you know, potentially where we're heading in the future. You know, our goal as a district is to move in getting our budget, you know, to at least adequacy. We hope these bills, you know, it's really a stepping stone. I don't, you know, see that they are the answer to, you know, all of our concerns here at Freehold Regional High School District, but we'll, you know, take each step, you know, as they come. We are hopeful that the legislators will be, you know, reviewing and making changes to the SFRA. That's the School Funding Formula, to ensure, you know, that districts, you know, like ours, can get to adequacy. We will, you know, as superintendent, business administrator, and our central office team, our building administrators, we are going to continue to work to prepare for a range of future scenarios. I can't wait on that work. You know, we will be back here, you know, in April, so preparations begin once we get through this, to begin to kind of look at our district and plan for our future. We remain steadfast in advocating, you know, for reasonable, you know, funding reform. And I know everybody that's here, our Board of Education, our administrators, all of our, you know, professional staff, we all remain committed to advocating, you know, for our children's education in this school district. That's our top priority. I would like to thank Manalapan Township for being here this evening, Marian Music and Susan Cohen. You know, they're always out gaining the knowledge and supporting, you know, this school district, so thank you very much. Also, tonight here with us is Michael Iliano from Senator Gopel's office. If you can give a wave, we have spoken by phone, has been extremely helpful in kind of assisting us in navigating this work. You know, I believe from his office and Senator Gopel's office, we're very hopeful for this legislation, but really hoping for further change in the future. And, you know, the senator's office is, you know, been kind of our partner, hand-in-hand, always, you know, willing to pick up the phone, talk with us, listen, spend time at those Senate Ed Committee meetings down in Trenton. So, you know, we will remain, you know, on a path of advocacy, you know, for the students of this school district. So just very hopeful that everything goes well on May ninth, and that gets signed by the Senate. Still, I think, needs a governor's signature. So we have extended, as Mr. Boyce mentioned, May ninth board meeting will now be May fourteenth. That is the absolute last day. So if everything is in check, you know, we could possibly look at, you know, that Plan B option for our budget, which would be extremely, you know, helpful.
Good?
Yes, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So questions from the board?
Yeah. So I just want, I have a comment. We used the word hopeful after hearing the beginning of his presentation. So many of us have been here for so long, as board members and principals and assistant principals and teachers, we've been beat up, and we rose. Every year, we seem to, and when you talk about twenty-six, I don't have any hair to lose, but it's frightening. So we just have to hope that there's a better scenario out there. The busing last year was a great blessing, but, you know, when you see thirty-nine staff members reduction, that's hard. And when you look at a hundred and thirty-five over eight years, that's a lot. So, and I've walked through the buildings, our class sizes, they're big. So, and that's happens when you cut. So, but you used the word hopeful. I think all of us are. And hopefully, May ninth, we'll be walking out with a little bit of a smile. Any other board members' comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Messenger?
Sure. Mr. Boyce, on the last slide you had, when it had the potential tax increase that may come?
Yes.
So if it said Marlboro, one point eight, does that mean one point eight cents higher?
Percentage? Any moment, Mr. Bruno.
Yeah, the tax rate would go up. It's a three-point-seven percent increase in the tax rate, and that increases one point eight cents.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Boyce, if I may? So the piece of legislation that is currently before government allows potentially for an increase of six-point-six-seven percent, but we, in that Plan B model, would only be requesting or only be upping our tax rate four-point-six-seven percent, right? So we're two percent under what the state would allow under that model.
That's correct, but just some clarification, because coincidentally, some of the numbers match up. That's an additional, additional on top of the two percent.
So would be eight-point-seven.
Right, the eight-point-seven, that would be inclusive, I'm sorry, of the two percent. The six-point-seven is the, for the seven million dollars, that's also inclusive of the two percent. So an additional four-point-seven or six-point-seven, but four-point-seven is what was, an additional four-point-seven is what was represented on the board.
But the law would state that we could get, if it passes, it would state we could take up to eight-point-seven, and we're, as this Freel Regional is not requesting that amount, correct?
That's correct. And so, interestingly, there is in the law a cap of, that you can't go over overall nine-point-nine percent. So even, but for us, even if we accessed, all of that was available to us, that would only bring us to eight-point-six-seven, so that overall cap doesn't, we don't get to that. So, yes, but your summary is right. We're not looking to add an additional ten million, it's an additional seven million, which results into an overall tax increase of six-point-six-seven percent.
Any other board member's comments?
Mark Tepreci?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bruno. I just wanted to thank all the administration that are here tonight, and for the last few years, you guys have really done... here tonight. And for the last few years, you guys have really done, done more with less in, into our administration. And, and I understand that because I work in state government, and sometimes we get cut and they tell you to do more with less. And I just appreciate that. I was on the Finance Committee this year, and, you know, we've kicked around all, everything that's happening right now. And I just want everybody to know that one of the things that we did talk about recently, and I think it's important that the community understands, is that if we do end up going out and, and raising taxes, we don't do it lightly, and we, it's important for me, I'll speak for myself, that the, that our community understands that if we access this money, I will do everything to advocate that this money is appropriated towards the student experience. I communicated that to, to Dr. Hazel and the administration, to our facilities, that this money is going to be spent in areas to enhance the student experience, student support programs. And I just want the community to know that. That's, that's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members comments? Mrs. Fox, I saw you come in. Would you like to make a comment? Okay, the microphone's on. That's what I hear. You're welcome.
This is very disheartening. I have several points and questions. Mr. Sampson had a lawsuit against the state. What happened to it?
I know.
That's number one.
Yeah. Why don't you answer them all?
Okay. If I was the administration, and I mean all administrators, I would be leaning so hard on the state and being in their face constantly. You want answers, you lean on them. I also don't understand why every year, the main weight is on Marlboro. Look at the taxes that Marlboro pays compared to all the other towns. Not fair. And the most embarrassing thing of all, and I, it gives me so little hope for what's going on in the classrooms. We have a sign that spelled taxpayers wrong. Thank you very much.
Ms. Fox?
I, I can do both. So the, the status of the lawsuit, it was a number of districts that, that band together to try and get from the state the methodology of creating those variables that translate the wealth indicators into ability to pay. As of yet, there's, that has, we haven't been successful at that, with that, but we continue to pursue it and trying to get to the bottom of that.
How about pushing, like in their face?
Regarding the tax allocation, so the, the state long, many years ago, decided how the, the district's tax levy would be apportioned among the communities. And there's, there's really three factors at play there. First is the equalized value or market value of the properties in each of the eight municipalities. And they actually split that valuation between elementary and high school. And the ratio with which they split it is the ratio of elementary students to high school students. So the, once that's done, the, the high school portions from each of the municipalities form the base, and the percentage share is then calculated. And that's how the, the tax levy is, is split up among the eight municipalities.
So Marlboro should be getting a whole lot more than anybody else since we pay so much more.
You're being, you're being, you're being taxed more because of the situation. And it's not, it's interesting because it's not only what's going on, it's not Marlboro specific, but what's going on in your own, your own town as far as, you know, what's the enrollment doing in elementary versus high school. But it's also, because that could be the same, but it's also in relation to what's happening in the other seven towns. So, you know, there are several factors at play there, but I think that the, the bottom line, the long and short of it is that the methodology is imposed on the district and any other regional district as well about how to split up the levy among the municipalities. Thank you.
You agree, Mrs. Fox?
Except for the explanation of how taxpayers was spelt incorrectly.
Where is that?
On one of the signs. It's embarrassing. And I have so many more suggestions.
That's on me. So that's my bad. I apologize.
Maybe you should ask me to review, and I mean it, I am an editor, professional editor, everything before it goes public. I do have so many more ideas, but I cannot say them publicly. Thank you very much, and thank you for acknowledging me.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go back to our committees.
Well, any other?
Anybody else? There's nobody, isn't anyone else except Mrs. Fox tonight?
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to go back to our reports. And Mr. Messenger, you're going to do, from Marlboro, he's going to do Finance. In the Finance side.
Well, basically, it really isn't, because everything that Mr. Boyce mentioned, we discussed it. So I would just be repeating what I said.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. And Mr. Parisi from Howell Township, you're going to be doing the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. And thank you, Mr. Messenger, because I have a long policy report. So let's cut to the chase here.
Dr. Howell says she would be shortening it.
And Dr. Howell, thank you for giving me this summary to read. All right, everybody, stay with me. I know it's been a lot tonight. The State Board of Education, what's that? The New Jersey State Board of Education re-adopted New Jersey Administrative Code 6A:7-1.1A, which I will hereafter refer to as the code since it's referenced several dozen times. Managing for equity in education with revisions to the code. The code provides rules governing equity in educational programs to guarantee each student equal access to all educational programs, services, and benefits of their school district regardless of the student's housing status, socioeconomic status, or immigration status, in addition to any protected category previously included in the code. The code also includes the protected classes listed in New Jersey's Law Against Discrimination, such as race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, age, marital status, civil union status, domestic partnership status, affectional or sexual orientation, genetic information, pregnancy or breastfeeding, sex, gender identity or expression, religion, disability, atypical, hereditary, cellular, or blood trait, service in the armed forces of the United States, or nationality. To align directly with the revisions of the code, Strauss S. May has removed the list of all the protected categories throughout the policy and regulation guides and replaced the list with the phrase, "the protect," quote, "the protected categories listed at the code," end quote. This also avoids repeating the complete list of all the protected categories in multiple places throughout a policy or regulation guide and avoids the need to revise these policy and regulation guides if the listed, list of protected classes is revised in the future. I will now go through and read all of the policies affected by this change. Policy 1140, Educational Equity Policies, Affirmative Action. Most of the revisions in Policy Guide 1140 remove the list of protected categories and replace the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. The remaining revisions are minor updates in the updated Administrative Code and relocate information addressing the CEP to Policy Guide 1523. Policy 1530, Equal Employment Opportunities. The revisions in Policy Guide 1530 remove the list of protected categories and replace the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. Policy 1550, Equal Employment Anti-Discrimination Practices. The only revision in Policy Guide 1550 removes the, the list of protected categories and replace the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. Policy 3211, Code of Ethics. The only revision in Policy Guide 3211 removes the list of protected categories and replaces the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. Policy 5841, Secret Societies. The only revision in Policy Guide 5841 removes the list of protected categories and replaces the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. Policy 9323, Notification of Juvenile Offender Case Disposition. Policy Guide 9323 removes the list of protected categories and replaces the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. A confidentiality statement has been added to Policy Guide 9323. Policy 2260, Equity in School and Classroom Practices. The revisions in Policy Guide 2260 include the relocation of information addressing access to adequate counseling services to Policy Guide 2411 and align with the recent revisions in, this is a different code, NJAC 6A:7-1.7A. The revisions in Policy Guide 2411 provide some additional details regarding student access to adequate counseling services. Policy 2423, Bilingual Education. The New Jersey State Board of Education adopted changes to NJAC 6A:15 and the requirements for bilingual education in public school districts. The recent amendments to NJAC 6A:15 address the services multilingual learners previously called English language learners need to meet or exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards to reach graduation and post-secondary success. The four key areas of NJAC 6A:15 with revisions are definitions, identification, organization, and additional requirements of the, of a school district. The title has also been updated. Policy 2431.4, Prevention and Treatment of Sports-Related Concussions and Head Injuries. The New Jersey Department of Education, Division of Educational Services, Office of Student Support Services released a new, quote, "model policy and guidance for districts on the prevention and treatment of sports-related head injuries and concussions," end quote. Policy and Regulation Guides 2431.4 have been rewritten to align with the provisions of the new guidance. The revisions to Policy and Regulation Guides 2431.4 are aligned with the most current recommendations developed by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Adoption of Policy Regulation Guides 2431.4 will ensure a most, a school district is in compliance with the statutory requirement to maintain a policy that is aligned to the most current recommendations developed by the CDC. Real quickly, the R?
Regulation.
Right, right. Okay. So, Regulation 5530, Substance Abuse. Regulation 5530 was referred to, was revised to reflect prior updates to Regulation 5660, Student Discipline Code of Conduct. Regulation 56600 separated the discipline for use of substance and possession/distribution of a substance. Regulation 5530 now separates the discipline for use of a substance and possession/distribution of a substance. Policy 5570, Sportsmanship. Policy Guide 5570 has been updated to align with the 2023, 2024 NJSIAA General Information Constitution Bylaws, Rules, and Regulations. Other revisions in Policy Guide 5570 include removing two optional provisions for determining unsportsmanlike conduct and removing the list of protected categories and replacing the list with the expanded list as defined in the aforementioned code. Policy 5750, Equitable Educational Opportunity. Reference to the Amistad Commission Curriculum and the Commission on Holocaust Education Curriculum has been removed from Policy Guide 5750 as these curricula are referenced in Policy Guide 2260. Policy 5842, Equal Access of Student Organizations. Policy Guide 5842 has been revised to address student involvement in student organizations. Other revisions in Policy Guide 5842 remove the list of protected categories and replace the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. Policy 7610, Vandalism. Policy Guide 7610 has been updated to remove the list of protected categories and replace the list with the expanded list as defined in the code. Policy Guide 7610 has been updated to address acts of graffiti as NJSA 2C:33-10 provides for a court order for the student to pay restitution to the district and assign community service requiring the student to remove their graffiti. I have two more left. Policy 1523, Comprehension Equity Plan. The revisions to Policy Guide 1523 add requirements to the CEP. And last but not least, Policy 5755, Equity in Educational Programs and Services. Policy Guide 5755 has been abolished as the, all the information within Policy Guide 5755 is addressed elsewhere in Strauss S. May Policies and Regulations. I thank everybody for your time.
You poor, you poor thing.
It's okay. I thought I did okay.
No, you did. All right. Everybody stopped.
It was a lot.
That's it. I did, I did policy for a long time. It stopped. And that was summarized. That was the summary. So, thank you. So, we're going to go back to the agenda, and we're going to do G, Personnel Negotiations. Oh, we're not going, I'm sorry, because we got to the changes. You go ahead, wait ahead.
So, two additional resolutions and then some changes to existing resolutions.
Oh, thank you. Two additional resolutions and, and two changes to existing resolutions. I'll do the additions first. G17, Approval of Termination. Be resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the termination of employee 13020 be approved effective June 23rd, 2024. And then another resolution, this one will be J15, titled HIB Appeal. J15, Motion to Deny the HIB Appeal in Connection with Report Number FB-23-24-17. So those are the two additions, Mr. Bruno. And for the changes in G3, Approval of Appointments, please remove Shayna Kendak and Maria Montoya. That's on G3. On G6, Approval of Student Teachers' Internships and Field Placement, please remove Jessica Rubman from consideration.
Thank you.
So the, the agenda as amended.
Thank you. So getting back to the agenda, we're going to look at Personnel and Negotiations, G, G1 through G17. Can I have a motion?
Second.
We had them at the same time.
This is Capiello's definite second.
Yeah, that's.
Mr. Acetola?
Mr. Acetola?
Okay.
You got it? Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
I approve all except for G15, yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Um, yes, all of everything except G15, relax, Steve.
Mrs. Hegley?
Yes, except I abstain on G15 for Browners and G15.
Ms. McCob?
Yes, except I abstain on G15.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes, and I just want to thank everybody that worked on the contract for the custodians. It was, a lot of time and effort was put into it. I'm glad that we got that resolved. So thank you for all involved.
Mr. Messenger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Thank you. We're going to go to H, Programmed Operations Building, Transportation, and Physical Plant, H1 through I1. Can I have a motion?
Ms. McCob?
Ms. McCob, and second was?
I second.
Oh, Kai Dan. Mrs. Capiello?
Hello?
Any discussion? Not hearing any, discussion, board? Roll call?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hegley?
Yes.
Ms. McCov?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're going to go into J and K, Educational Programs and Administration. May I have a motion to approve J1 through K7?
Motion.
Mrs. Cap, Mr.?
Mr. Acetola?
Mrs. Hegley, second. Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes, on everything except on K1, I abstain from Dr. Hazel.
Mrs. Hegley?
Yes, and I also abstain from K1 to Dr. Hazel.
Ms. McCov?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Do any of the board members have any old business? Not hearing any old business. Okay. And any new business? And what are we doing Monday? Middle States? Get something in the morning?
Yeah, in the morning.
Monday morning, we have another Middle States Committee?
Yes, and we have, we'll have our visit in the fall, which is in December, so looking forward to that. But our final meeting of our systems team, Mr. Bruno was a part of that, as well as a number of our administrators and staff and community members. That'll be Monday morning at 8:30.
Okay, great. And then, anybody else have?
I just, I apologize. I do apologize. My math was off.
No more policy.
It's no more policy, no policy. No, no, it's okay. No, the, because of the necessary extensions required under the Nepotism Act and the School Ethics Act, we actually were, I miscounted. We were a point one.
Over.
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 However, because a majority of the Board is unable to vote on the action item, we will bring the action item back at the next meeting, and we will have to invoke the doctrine of necessity. There needs to be a formalized resolution that we will adopt, and we'll have to mail it to the School Ethics Commission. So we'll prepare that, and it will be on the agenda for the, for the 14th, but it, it.
Question?
Yes.
Do we have a full board then?
So.
Vote then, we'll have to.
Actually, Mrs. Capiello, that's a great question. No, it's actually because of the number of weighted votes. So just for members of the public, the Freo Regional High School District, members that you see here tonight on the Board of Education have weighted votes. It is not, each vote is, is, is equal. Some votes are weighted more than others. In order for a motion to pass, we need a weighted vote of at least 4.6 out of our total nine. I had just miscounted a tenth of one of the other votes. So when we invoke the doctrine of necessity, everybody can vote, even those who are conflicted.
If Mrs. Lavin was to...
It would not matter.
Okay.
It would not matter. The doctrine can only be invoked when a majority of the Board is conflicted, which by virtue of the fact that the weighted votes of the individuals that had to abstain was 4.6, we have to invoke the doctrine. And I will tell you that I have been here since 2011. This would be the first time that we will have had to invoke the doctrine of necessity.
So, Mark, for the purposes of the minutes of tonight's meeting, did G15 fail?
Does not pass. It fails. Only because...
But the remainder of the G items do pass?
Yes, yes.
Everything else in G passes?
Everything else, everything else, everything else passed. We will have it back on the agenda. It's, it's not a no vote. We just need more weighted votes.
Okay, gotcha.
So nobody voted no.
Okay.
For G15.
G15.
Oh, jeez. Well, I still thank everybody for all their work on that.
We're going to finish it. We're going to finish it. We'll, we'll get it done.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Bruno, I think it's worth reminding the public that the May 9th meeting is being moved to May 14th?
Yes, May 9th postponed until May 14th at Marlborough High School.
At what time?
5:30.
Public's at 6:30, right?
Public's at 6:30, yes.
So the, the meeting will open at 5:30. There'll be a motion to go into executive session, and then back out in public at 6:30.
We'll give our awards.
And where it's an awards night, so 6:30 would be the, the time to arrive.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. And I need a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that Amanda?